...to America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening, with the exception of Councilman Partey. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on August 6, 2018, as on file in the City Clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $300,746.17. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $62,713.30. Item G, approval of special designated license application of Trall Tree Tastings LLC for the Young Nebraskans Week to be held on September 29, 2018, from 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 122 North 5th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item H, resolution number 6249 to reopen the alley located between Logan Street, Washington Street, North 5th Street, and North 6th Street. Item I, resolution number 6250, executing the agreement with Mark W. Clausen authorizing the city to install a full curb along a portion of the north side of Court Street and adjacent to the south line of 101 North 7th Street. And item J, resolution number 6251, entering into a service agreement to authorize alternative claims management to seek any possible recovery for damages caused to vehicles owned by the city of Beatrice. Any item a member from the City Council wants removed from the consent agenda? Rick?
Jay.
Item J. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that all the items listed on the consent agenda, with the exception of item J, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that all items under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Mr. Claybaugh?
Moving back to item J.
Let's go back to item J.
Resolution, I move, Mayor, that resolution number 6250, executing an agreement with Mark W. Clausen, authorizing the city to install a full curb along a portion of the north side of Court Street.
That's all I want.
Oh, excuse me.
Item J.
Been one of those days.
Last one.
Moving back to item J. Resolution number 6251, entering into a service agreement to authorize alternative claims management to seek any possible recovery for damages caused to vehicles owned by the city of Beatrice, be accepted, approved, and ratified as presented.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that further discussion occur on resolution number 6251. Tobias?
So, this is a company that contacted us. What they do is they go out and look at different times when a city vehicle's been involved in an accident, any time it's out of service. Their company goes out and tries to look for ways to recover funds as a result of that vehicle being out of service. It's not anything that we have in our current insurance policy. We did check with our insurance agent. Abby did some investigating into this company. They charge us no money. If they go out looking, don't find anything, they only recover money if they only receive money if they recover money on our behalf. I think they can go back four years. We've been thinking over the last four years. Obviously, we had the ambulance that was wrecked. We've had three police cruisers that were wrecked. We've had some other city vehicles. I assume what they'll do is they'll go out and look at the other drivers' insurance policies and see if there's a particular item in there that'll allow them to recover as a result of us having downtime with our vehicles.
There is no cost to us.
Yeah, no cost to us, but is that something we could be doing on our own anyway, though? Is that something Abby would be able to handle first?
I'm sure Abby's more than capable of doing it. It's just bound of time that would take to track down those types of things. It's probably more beneficial to outsource those someplace else and have her work on other items.
Rich?
If they do find something, what's the percentage of cost of what they recoup?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. Well, better than nothing, I guess.
Any other questions? Audience? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing on the new application of Rusty Bartlet's Doing Business as Beer &amp; Bones Barbecue Roadhouse, located at 124 South 23rd Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a new Class 1 liquor license. Gentlemen, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir, I do. Yes. The Police Department conducted the standard liquor license application, and nothing was uncovered that would have any impact on our recommendation towards approval.
Rob Merrill, Chief Building Inspector, did a planning report for the city and found that in three directions, northeast and west, is general commercial; to the south is R2 residential. It is in compliance with our zoning ordinance, and I would add that this location has had three previous tenants that have had a liquor license in the past several years that I can recall.
Any questions of the chief or Rob? Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:06 p.m.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at 7:06 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero.
Mayor, I would move that the new application of Rusty Bartlet Doing Business as Beer's &amp; Bones Barbecue Roadhouse at 124 South 23rd Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a new Class 1 liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the application of Rusty Bartlet be forwarded on to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. Any further discussion needed? Your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Next is a public hearing regarding the re-ordinance application, I beg your pardon, the rezoning application, of David M. and Michelle M. Gleason for Gage County Parcel ID Number 010930000, commonly known as 512 Lincoln Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, Gage County, Nebraska, from residential for general commercial, R4, to GC to general commercial GC.
So, this is the Gleason's old dentist shop. Their dentist office there at about 6 and Court Street, or 6 and Lincoln Street, if you guys remember. Well, upon review, what we determined is that they own approximately one and a half lots is where that building is built over. One lot is zoned residential, one lot is zoned general commercial. And so, the new buyer of it would like to make basically a little knickknack shop out of it, which has to be zoned general commercial. And so, we're here recommending that you rezone the other half of the building as general commercial.
Fifty years ago.
Yes, probably at least fifty years ago.
Hey, Doc Gleason, isn't that old now? Come on.
There he is.
Yeah, all of that. It's all of that.
Guy'd be nice. He's my dentist still.
Well, exactly. It's gotta be all of fifty years, is what I'm saying.
Okay, any other questions? Regarding the change in zoning? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:09 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at 7:09 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Next is item C, public hearing regarding the rezoning application of Blake Meitz Custom Homes for Gage County, parcel number ID Number 004064000, the proposed North Shores Estates subdivision, city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, from agricultural AG to rural residential RR.
So, tonight you have, before you platt, that Blake is presenting to us about having us or platt some different lots out in the county. Most of these are up around the truck stop to give you some general idea of where you're at in the county. As part of that process, we're looking to rezone those lots from ag to rural residential, which is very common in what we've done, I think, which is about every other development on the outskirts of town. And he just barely falls into two-mile zoning jurisdiction.
Questions? All right, Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Next item is item D, a public hearing regarding the rezoning application of Wesley J. and Sandra S. Meitz for Gage County Parcel ID Number 004095500, the proposed Saddle Ridge subdivision, city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, from agricultural AG to rural residential RR.
Basically, the same song, just a little different area of the community. If you go 19th Street north out of town, where it curves and heads back to the east, I think if you take the first road and go back to the north, about right in there is where this subdivision's located. I believe it's four lots, again, just within our two-mile zoning jurisdiction, looking to rezone this from ag to rural residential.
Just north of Hickory.
Okay.
Any questions, gentlemen? From the audience? All right, I recommend the public hearing be closed.
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:11 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, public hearing be closed at 7:11 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Next item is a resolution, beg your pardon, an ordinance, an ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, by changing the zoning of Gage County Parcel ID Number 01093000, commonly known as 512 Lincoln Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, Gage County, Nebraska, from residential for general commercial, R4 GC to general commercial GC.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be... Excuse me. Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18-023. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the ordinance be given number 18-023. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-023 by number the first time, ordinance number 18-023 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18-023 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 13-023 be passed and...
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance be given number 18-03... 18-023 be passed and approved. Ted?
I don't have any problem with this. But I do have a question. This comes up kind of routinely now. We're finding these things. Do you... And I'm sure not with this group, but do you ever have them stop and say, "Really? Do we have to?" Or, "I'm not doing it"? Or... And when you explain to them that it has to be done, have you ever had somebody say, "Yeah, then I'm just not gonna do it"? I'm just not gonna...
No, not to my knowledge. There have been some times where people shake their heads and say, "You know, really? Been here for fifty years. This comes up now." But most time when you just explain the process it takes, you know, "Give us a little bit of time, we'll get it done." I haven't had anybody say, "No, we're not gonna waste our time doing it."
Because there's a negative involved.
Right.
Yeah. It was just curiosity on my part. I did... Okay, thanks.
The only thing I would note is Planning Zoning did review and recommend this zoning change.
Questions, anyone from the audience? All right, your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-023 has been approved. Next is item B, ordinance approving the platt of the North Shores Estates subdivision, city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, parcel ID Number 004064000, the Blake Meitz Custom Homes Division.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18-024. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that the ordinance be given number 18-024. Title thereof approved, rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-024 by number the first time, ordinance number 18-024 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18-024 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18-024 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number 18-024 be passed and approved. Any further discussion required, gentlemen?
The only thing I would note is, again, Planning Zoning did review this and recommended approval.
Tobias, anyone from the audience? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-024 has been passed and approved. Next is item C, ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, by changing the zoning of North Shore Estates subdivision, city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, from agriculture to rural residential. That parcel number is 004064000.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18-025. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the ordinance be given number 18-025. Title thereof approved, rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-025 by number the first time, ordinance number 18-025 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18-025 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18-025 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance number 18-025 be passed and approved. Tobias?
Again, Planning Zoning did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions, anyone? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-025 has been approved. Next is item D, an ordinance approving the platt of the Saddle Ridge subdivision, city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, and that parcel number is 004095500.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18-026. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that the ordinance be given number 18-026. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That's approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-026 by number the first time, ordinance number 18-026 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18-026 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18-026 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance number 18-026 be passed and approved.
Once again, Planning Zoning did review this and recommended approval.
Any further questions, gentlemen? Write your vote, please. And that's passed, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-026 has been approved. Next item is an ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, by changing the zoning of Saddle Ridge subdivision, city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, from agriculture AG to rural residential RR. That parcel number is 004095500.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18-027. Title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 18-027. The title thereof approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-027 by number the first time, ordinance number 18-027 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18-027 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18-027 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance number 18-027 be passed and approved. Further discussion?
You may be surprised, but Planning Zoning reviewed this and they recommend approval.
All right. I'd have missed that if you would have not said it. Any other discussion? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-027 has been approved. Next is item F, an ordinance to close and vacate a portion of Arbor Avenue located in the Bybee addition to the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, Gage County.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18-028. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the ordinance be given number 18... Number 18-028. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-028 by number the first time, ordinance number 18-028 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18-028 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance number 18-028 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the ordinance number 18-028 be passed and approved. Tobias?
Abby, can you pull the map up for us? So, this is Arbor Avenue. It's between 21st and 22nd Street in the northeast portion of town. What we're looking to do tonight is have this street right-of-way, this was platted at one time, be vacated. And ultimately, what you'll have later is have that property sold to the East Arbor Meadows building, which is just located to the south of the street. What we've had is the lots to the north of this at one time were platted, and any lot in the city limits has to have street access. And so, you had to have the street in there so those lots technically had street right-of-way access at some point. All the lots along that, along the north side of the street there have been purchased by other houses in the area and have been combined with their lots. The one that remained was one lot sitting there. Within the last two months, though, East Arbor Meadows has purchased that lot and acquired it, removing the need to have Arbor Avenue continue through there. If you... Arbor Avenue's no longer gonna extend to the east because if it would, it would run into a house on the very east end of the block, so that can't extend any farther to the east. It does extend to the west. And so, what we would look to do is have you vacate this street and then hopefully later tonight approve the sale of it to East Arbor Meadows.
I don't have... So, when we discussed this before, I don't have a problem with the sale or vacating it, but I failed to ask, do we have... Do we maintain easement in there? Do we have any service through that?
We don't have any utilities through that area, no.
Well, I didn't think so after I looked at the map. I mean, obviously, the driveway comes in off of Arbor, and I assumed that we didn't allow them to... But I didn't remember. I assumed that we didn't allow them to pave over our utilities, but I didn't remember the conversation when we approved the platt initially, the Bybee addition, and sold this lot to... Sold this property to them for the build, so... That was just a question. I don't have any problem with it. I was just wondering if we maintained easement.
Any other questions from anyone? Anyone from the public? Your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-028 has been approved. Next is item G, an ordinance to convey the vacated portion of Arbor Avenue located in the Bybee addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, owned by the city of Beatrice, to East Arbor Meadows LLC.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18-029. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the ordinance be given number 18-029. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-029 by number the first time, ordinance 18-029 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18-029 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18-029 be passed and approved.
By Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given... The ordinance number 18-029 be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
I believe the sale price of this lot's $500 is what we're looking to have the buyer pay for it. Really, the only thing that'll delay the closing of this will be the remonstrance period by state law. We have to wait 21 days after the passage of this ordinance before we can transfer it. That'll be the only delay in proceeding with transferring.
Comments, questions? All right, your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-029 has been approved. Next is a resolution, resolution number 6252, entering into a contract for sale of real estate to East Arbor Meadows LLC.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number 6252 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that resolution number 6252 be passed and adopted.
What you had before is a very short real estate agreement. It's a lot of just kind of some boilerplate that you have to have in those contract agreements, but otherwise, it's $500 we sell to East Arbor Meadows. Their corporation, once again, the closing date is pushed off for the per state law.
Any questions? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number... Resolution number, beg your pardon, 6252 has been approved. Next is item I, an ordinance to close and vacate a portion of the alley located between Helen Street and Milliken Street and between Sumner Street and Laramore Street in Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 18-030. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 18-030. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 18-030 by number the first time, ordinance number 18-030 by number the second time, and ordinance number 18-030 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18-030 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance number 18-030 be passed and approved.
So, we were approached by one of the property owners along this alleyway to asking us to vacate the alleyway. This alley is on the west side of town. It's parallel to Sumner Street between Helen and Milliken Street. There are no utilities in that area. Upon looking at their request, what we ended up with, we ended up with a little pocket of alleyway that's kind of in the middle of the block. And so, at that point, that's when we got hold of the property owners adjacent to that portion, which should be the Bonermires, and asked if they would be willing to purchase the rest of the alleyway if we vacated it. And they said they would be. So, that's why you have two buyers involved here. But there are no utilities in the area. We did check with all of our guys. In fact, we went over and looked. There's a nice tree line growing up through the middle of this alley. It's one of those, I don't think anybody knows it's there, other than the fact it's platted someplace.
So, Tobias, this... I think, as adjacent to Helen Street, is that still in the floodway fringe? I mean, they can't build on this anyway, right?
That I don't know for sure.
The fringe stops about half a block back to the north.
Over on there?
Yeah.
I thought it...
It winds back, I think, on the north... On the south side of the creek.
Regardless, I knew the Bonermire piece isn't out because there's an elevation there.
Yeah. That's a little higher.
And they're obviously not doing this. I just want to make sure that they understand if it's in the fringe, and I believe it is, that they can't build on it.
Yeah, we'd have to check. Obviously, if they have to build anything, they'd come down and get building permits. We would do the inspections. We would do the elevations at that point.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I just... And David's probably right. It's probably over on there, but to my recollection, it was here, and I failed to ask when we discussed it before, so...
Any other comments? Any other comments? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number eighteen dash zero three zero has been approved. Next is item J, an ordinance to convey a portion of the vacated portion of the alley located between Helen Street and Milliken Street and between Sumner Street and Laramore Street in Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, owned by the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, to Douglas H. Bournemire and Jacqueline L. Bournemire.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number eighteen dash zero three one, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number eighteen dash zero three one, title thereof approved, rules suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, the motion, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number eighteen dash zero three one by number the first time, ordinance number eighteen dash zero three one by number the second time, and ordinance number eighteen dash zero three one by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number eighteen dash zero three one be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance number eighteen dash zero three one be passed and approv, approved. Any further discussion needed?
The buyers in this incident are offering two hundred and fifty dollars to purchase their portion of the alley that's being vacated, which is the same as the other portions being sold tonight as well for the alley.
The other half.
The other half.
Any other questions? Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number eighteen dash zero three one has been passed and approved. Next is a resolution, resolution number sixty-two fifty-three, entering into a contract of sale of real estate to Douglas H. Bournemire and Jacqueline L. Bournemire.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number sixty-two fifty-three be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that resolution number sixty-two fifty-three be passed and adopted.
Once again, you just have a very short contract, two hundred and fifty dollars is the sale price, and biggest portion is that we just have to wait the, the three weeks per state statute before we can transfer title.
Other questions from anyone from the audience? Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Resolution number sixty-two fifty-three has been passed and approved. Next is item L, an ordinance to convey a portion of the vacated portion of the alley located between Helen Street and Milliken Street and between Sumner Street and Laramore Street in Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, owned by the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, to Brian D. Soderstrom and Alicia K. Soderstrom.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number eighteen dash zero three two, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaum, that the ordinance be given number eighteen dash zero three two, the title thereof approved, rules suspended, and said ordinance but, read by title only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. And that's approved seven zero. Ordinance number eighteen dash zero three two by number the first time, ordinance number eighteen dash zero three two by number the second time, and ordinance number eighteen dash zero three two by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number eighteen dash zero three two be approved and, passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number eighteen dash zero three two be passed and adopted.
This is for the north half of the alley, very same as the last half, it's just two hundred and fifty dollars as well.
Any other questions? And your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number eighteen dash zero three two has been passed and adopted. Next is item M, resolution number sixty-two fifty-four, entering into a contract for sale of real estate to Brian D. Soderstrom and Alisa K. Soderstrom.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number sixty-two fifty-four be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that resolution number sixty-two fifty-four be passed and adopted. Any other questions? Comments? Your vote, please. And that is approved seven zero. Resolution number sixty-two fifty-four has been approved. Next is item N, resolution number sixty-two fifty-five, executing the Aquila settlement agreement, mutual release and covenant not to sue between the city of Beatrice, KCP and L, GMOC and Black Hills.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number sixty-two fifty-five be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that resolution number sixty-two fifty-five be passed and adopted.
So this is a settlement agreement having to do with the former manufactured gas plant that was located approximately first in Market Street. As anybody who's been following it knows that we spent quite a bit of time researching that area and then ultimately cleaning it up, first with the EPA and then ultimately with the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. This agreement is in place because the city of Beatrice, back in two thousand and five, filed a lawsuit against Aquila, and through their successors and interest over the years, it's included Kansas City Power and Light, Black Hills Energy, at all, have been different successors and interests throughout this time period. But this agreement, basically, as the title said, it's a settlement agreement, but everybody's going to release all of the lawsuits that are pending out there against each other. Everybody releases everybody of any claims and liabilities that they may have. We agree that Black Hills and Aquila are not potentially responsible parties pursuant to CIRCLA, which is basically the EPA rules and guidelines when it comes to environmental issues, and there's a covenant not to sue, so we agree that we're not, nobody's going to sue each other over the result of what's going on there at this point. So through all of that, what happens is Black Hills will pay the city of Beatrice six hundred thousand dollars as part of this settlement agreement to resolve all of the outstanding issues that are out there. To just remind everybody, the city of Beatrice has spent two point four million dollars on this project to date. Our cash reserves decreased approximately nine hundred thousand dollars over the last two years largely due to this project. So what we look to do with this six hundred thousand dollars we're getting is put those back into our general reserve cash, our general fund cash reserves, and use that money to build those reserves back up to a level that we feel comfortable.
Questions? Rich?
Just one, Toby. Is EPA going to be monitoring that down there for a few years or months or years or whatever?
The EPA will not be, Department of Environmental Quality will be. As, so the first step is they're going to monitor it short term, probably the next two to five years, see how groundwater's going, make sure we don't build houses down there, that's part of our covenants with them, those types of things. Once they feel as if they have enough adequate data, they will then transfer us over to kind of a post-closure account, if you will. Both us and Centel will have to put some money into a reserve account that DEQ will draw from as part of their expenses moving forward to monitor, and they'll monitor essentially forever.
Do we have any idea what that money's going to be that we're going to-
It's ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
And again, we pay twenty-five percent, Centel pays seventy-five percent of those costs. There'll be some cost between now and the time we get to that post-closure time, but the fees and expenses for this project have decreased greatly. I mean, you've gotten rid of all the big exposure, all the, you know, the equipment in town moving dirt, and now you're down to the scientists drilling some holes and looking at some groundwater.
Okay.
Ted?
Tobias, you might also explain that this project started this big and we had an opportunity to expand it and take care of all of it, which led to our increased cost.
Right, so when we initially discovered the site back in about two thousand and four, two thousand and five, we weren't entirely sure how big of the area that was that was incandinated. Through a decade's worth of drilling holes and taking samples, we, we'd kind of got a good idea of where the, the size was at. But in that process, we learned that some of it was underneath the railroad tracks, some of it was to the east of the railroad tracks. DEQ didn't like the idea of just stopping at the railroad tracks and not digging further up, and so they wanted us to clean further to the east. We had to then work with the co-op and with the railroad to remove their tracks, clean the ground underneath the tracks, put the railroad tracks back down. Not all that ground did we necessarily own, but it was a much easier process doing it that way than trying to fight DEQ and go around that issue. So ultimately ended up being a very nice, clean area down there.
Okay, so lastly, I have my question, I have a question, not just prompting you to give us a little speech there, but, so we had an agreement with the company, they essentially put it back to vegetation, found some trees, there's some plantings there. Are we required to maintain that? Is that part of the process? I mean, when they're, when the environmental control comes back and looks at it, are we required to maintain a certain amount of vegetation there? Or is that our responsibility, or, I, obviously it's our responsibility, but is it going to be monitored? I guess it's my question.
In, in the agreements that I've seen, I haven't seen anywhere it says you have to maintain seven trees or a certain amount of grass coverage. I've not seen any of those types of things. What the covenants talks about is they want to make sure nobody lives on the ground, they want to make sure that you're not building structures, you're not putting wells down there to drink from, those types of things. Those are more the covenants that we have going forward, which are the same covenants you have since you bought with FEMA money back in the early nineties anyhow. They're the same covenants, they just want us to put them down yet again.
But it's still our property and we'll still maintain it.
Right, it, it's no different, we're not ta, we're not treating this any differently. The other piece of floodplain property we've bought up along South Sixth or West Court or anywhere else, so, and, and we've done a lot of that. Okay. Joe's got it.
Joe?
What's, I know when they had built that dam originally or that barrier, or it got washed away. Are we responsible for if they ever tried to do any of that?
The Cofford Dam that washed away last, was it last spring?
Yeah.
I have been notified of exactly where it's located. We had a Mike Soden, Michael Soden was out canoeing one day, found it, got the GPS location for it. We forwarded it back on to the company who is going to come back out and pick that stuff up. They are responsible for getting it done, so. They came down, they've got photos of it already. We have identified that was in fact what others have seen on, the big blue, and so it should be removed, hopefully rather soon.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Resolution number sixty-two fifty-five has been approved. Next is resolution number fifty-two fifty-six, executing the Kirkman Michael settlement agreement, mutual release and covenant not to sue between the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, Kirkman Michael, KCP and L, GMOC and Black Hills.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number sixty-two fifty-six be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that resolution number sixty-two fifty-six be passed and adopted. Some of the same?
Very similar, same piece of property, we, again, filed this lawsuit in two thousand and five. Kirk and Michael's involved because they were the consultants the city hired back in the nineties to review the ground and help us with the purchase of it through the FEMA floodplain buyout program. Obviously, there's some disagreements on, on how that consulting agreement worked out, so what you have before you is again, a settlement, release, and all the same things that we just had with the Aquila lawsuit. At this point, Kirk and Michael's paying the city of Beatrice fifty thousand dollars.
And they go back into the general fund like the other money?
That's correct.
Questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved seven zero. Resolution number sixty-two fifty-six has been passed and adopted. Next is item P, resolution number sixty-two fifty-seven, placing on the ballot of the general election, the question of whether to increase the existing city sales and use tax by an additional one-half cent to issue general obligation bonds for the construction of a new fire station.
Mayor, I would move that resolution number sixty-two fifty-seven be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that resolution number sixty-two fifty-seven be passed and adopted.
So what you have before you is the resolution that if approved by this body would put this issue before the vote of the people at the general election in November of this year. It's a local option sales tax issue. In it, we're asking for an increase in the sales tax of one-half of one percent. For this body to approve it, it's going to require six votes from this body to be approved. We have to submit it to the county clerk by September fourth of this year. So when you start looking at the calendar, our next meeting is September fourth, but we don't meet until after they're closed for the day, so that's why we have it on the agenda for tonight.
Questions? Ted?
So, we haven't determined the site. We haven't determined a cost. We haven't determined how we pay for this if the sales tax doesn't cover it, and we haven't determined whether or not the sales tax revenue will cover it, but you want us to vote on this tonight?
Well, the sales tax, if it's approved, is last to the longer of ten years or until the bonds are paid off. So if you issue bonds, and if your bonds take twelve years, your sales tax stays in place for those twelve years to pay off the bonds.
And if sales tax revenues level off or decrease over the next twelve years, and it doesn't cover the cost of the bonds, how do we pay for it?
Again, the sales tax will stay in place until the bonds are retired. So if you estimate that your sales tax is going to bring in half a million dollars, and it only brings in four hundred thousand dollars, the sales tax would stay in place for an extra couple of years for the shortfall. Other options that you would have before you is you could always turn to your general fund to help with those, or you could look at public safety debt if you were fell short and look for that to help supplement any shortfall you might have in the bond proceeds.
Well, you and I had a pretty brief conversation, Tobias and I had a pretty brief conversation about public safety debt to pay for all of it, and I, I would lean more towards that. I'm, I'm really reluctant to tie city, city sales tax up for ten, twelve, fifteen years. I mean, it, it just, I, may, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make it any more palatable than it would be to increase your property tax. And I, I, you look at, you look at everything that's coming, and, and I, I'm just really reluctant to vote for it. Like I said, I'm not quite sure how you're going to pay for it, how long it's going to take, not sure where you're going to put it, or how much it's going to cost, and you, and you want me to, and by me voting for it, I'm supporting it, and, and I'm, I'm reluctant to do that. I, I'd like to see it built, I'm not saying that. I, that's where I'm at with it.
Rich?
As far as property tax and sales tax, I'd rather see it go on the sales tax because everybody's going to be paying for it, not only the property owners. It's, 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 to me, it, it makes more sense for everybody to pay for it. But I do have one problem, Ted kind of touched on it. If we go ahead and fund this, if this, if, if, if the voters are good enough to give us this half-cent city sales tax, does that, does that end their participation in this? Or are we going to have a couple of options? Now, I've been hearing out in the community, a standalone new fire hall. I've also been hearing an addition to the, to the auditorium, fire hall, to, to use what we've got. Are we going to be able to give the, the constituents and the taxpayers the choice of what they want to do? Give them, give them the price of this one, the price of this one, the good and bad of this one, the good and bad of that one? How are we going to do that? Because I think that the taxpayers should be involved in the final decision of where we put it and how we do it and, and everything else. Now, this, we'll just fund it. What about, what about the letting them in on the-
Well, I think-
The final decision instead of just putting it in a committee's hands and saying, here's what you get?
We've hired a consulting firm, and that consulting firm has picked some eight different sites. It's, it's, nothing has been finalized at all.
I understand that.
What we're voting on tonight is the question of whether or not we want to do it. They have some estimates of what it, what it conceivably can cost, and I think we have to, since we hired them and we're paying them, you know, quite, quite a bit of money, quite a bit of money today, that we have to rely on their estimates, their designs, and there's been numerous meetings regarding this, and getting a lot of input from city administration, input from the fire department, from the rural fire department, as to what they would like to see in this facility, and, but to make it sustainable for not just ten years, not just twenty years, make it sustainable for at least forty to fifty years if we can.
And I understand administration and all that, and the fire hall and every, but basically the taxpayers are going to be paying for this thing. I think they should have some input on where it goes, what, you know, if they want to stand alone, new one, or if they want to add on to the- stand alone new one, or if they want to add on to the...
I think what I like about it, Rich, is it's, it's, it's an increase in the sales tax. So if somebody's here for a week calling on customers from Oklahoma, the money that they spend and the taxes that they pay is going to help pay for this fire department.
I agree with that 100%, but what I'm saying is I think that the taxpayers should have some say in where we put it and, and where it's going to be built, what monies they want. Am I, am I making myself clear or am I?
Well, that ultimately, as the mayor indicated, we have hired a consultant, they are reviewing all those options. This body will make those final decisions as to what location is chosen, what the design is. That'll be decisions made by this body, and that's how the public will have their input. Obviously, they have your elected representatives, you're here to represent them, and so that's where they'll get their input and their say. We would love to have any committee member want to come talk to us and receive some input as well.
Can I jump in real quick?
I think there should be a couple of options laid out there in the public.
Are you wanting like the ballot to say this place or that place? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying that it should be funded, but before we build the thing, because you're not going to be able to buil, build this for what, a couple of years down the line?
Uh, yeah.
By the time you get your, your engineers and everything else involved in this, it's going to take a year and a half to two years anyway, isn't it, before we start laying brickage?
That's possible, depending on what ultimate site's picked and what needs to be done to that location, it's possible that maybe a year to a year and a half before you'd be able to break ground and start building back.
Well, I still say that the taxpayers should have some input on, on where it's built and how it's done.
Okay, okay. Some of the plans that we haven't quite laid out, but we're going to have some town hall meetings about this, go into different locations, get the public's input, walkthroughs like we've done in the past to educate them of where we're at right now, so. So we, and we will, of course, you know, take their input and go from there, and we even talked about possibly doing a citizens committee, committee, to also look at all of this stuff from a diverse group in the community.
Ted? Just a minute.
Something else, go ahead, I, my question, wait, go ahead and ask.
Bob?
You know, Ted, I, I kind of, I know what you're saying and where you're going. I guess the way I look at this is this gives the community the opportunity to tell us kind of a direction of where they want to go by passing this or not passing this result, you know, the, the bond or the half cent. And so I really think, you know, first of all, I would, I certainly support it. I certainly think that where the building they're in now is inadequate. I think there's some safety concerns going down the road that are very, very important. However, to me, what we're really saying is, okay, community, do you want to support this or not? And that's what this vote, to me, is all about.
And I would much rather have the sales tax than property tax.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I, and I don't disagree with you, and I'd like to see new fire station built as well. And my time here on the body, I have never voted against anything being built. I want to see Beatrice grow, I want to see his thing. I have some real reservations with this, because it, you may not be tying this up for 10 or 12 years. I mean, you get a little, you know, sales tax is, is on dollars spent. You look, you look at what occurred, what's occurring right now in York, okay? Leveled off, it's dropping down, okay? You could be tying this thing up for, you know, you hate to give, put numbers on it because then that, that's fixed, but you could be turning, you could be tying this up for, for more years than 10 or 12 years, easily. And, and by me voting for this tonight, I'm telling the community that I support it. And I know that you've had incredible amount of hours put into this. You've been here and you've sent this to Tobias and staff. We've talked about this three times for a total less than an hour, okay? And, and, and I'm not ready to support it because I, because you, and I understand the whole principle of it, you know, the, the mistakes that have been made and passed in other bond issues at the school and the jail and, you know, the jail had a site that they picked, and then the land went up, and the school, then they went out and bought it before that and that, you know, and so I understand the whole principle of this, that you're trying to get around that. But you're asking me to support something that I know this much about, and, you know, other than you need one.
Right.
I, I, and I'm not disagreeing with that, but without being able to tell me what it's going to cost, how long it's going to take to pay for, and where it's going to be at, I, I just, I'm really struggling with supporting it. I mean, I hate to be that guy that sits here and says no, but, you know, sales tax dollars are generated from people spending money, and things that are bought are usually bought with, not always, but things are bought with disposable income. Engage County, Beatrice proper Engage County, disposable income is going to go down. When your property taxes go up, and they're going to go up, okay, because there's no way around that. I, you know, at a minimum, it depends on what school district you live in within Engage County, you know, it's going to go up anywhere from, what, 6% to 10%? You know, your sales tax, we're still an ag-based economy, so, you know... Because you're going to float this out here and say, till, till the people are going to vote on this, the city of Beatrice, that, look, this is going to be paid for in 10 years or 12 years, when in reality, you don't know when it's going to be paid for.
Right.
So I, I get it, I get it, Brian, but I, you know, chief, I do, but I'm, I'm really reluctant, so.
Brian, when, when do you plan on announcing the location of your selected location? When, when do you plan to do that? Or get your list down to one, two or so?
Um, actually, I think our list is down to three or four, I can't remember which.
Right, well, again, what we'd probably do is come back to this body, have an exact session, have you guys talk about those locations, and then we would look to hopefully get places under contract before we go public with it. Obviously, once we let the public know which area we're looking at, prices have a tendency to adjust.
But, but the voters will know what the location is before they vote, correct?
Possibly, I can't say for certain they would or won't.
90 days. You're getting 90 days before the election. So that's the question, can you pull everything together and, and put it out there and educate everyone that's going to vote on this in the next 90 days? That's my last question.
The only thing I would note is local option sales tax has to be on a general or primary election. It's the only thing that's allowed by state statute, we're not allowed to have a special election.
Yeah.
So if we don't move this thing now, we have to wait two years?
Correct.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Ted, or, I'm sorry, Phil?
I, I will be supporting this, but for, you know, we talk about these reasons, but why would we go and spend a lot of more money with the architects for conceptual drawings and for land purchases and things if we don't have the support? Let's first figure out if we even have the support before we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars with an engineer, end up with something that looks really nice on the shelf because the voter said no, and then we just scrap it. So I'd rather see if the people are for it first. You know, we can give them consensual drawings of something that could possibly be, but I don't want to go out and buy land, spend 200, 300,000 with the engineer, and then we don't have the okay from the citizens. We've seen that before, and then we're just stuck with a real nice piece of shiny expensive paper on the shelf. So I'd rather see it go through. If the voters say yes, then we go ahead and get our committees put together, design it, purchase it, and move forward in the next few years.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, gentlemen, I'm going to ask for your vote.
Do you need all of us to vote for this? I don't want to be the guy that stops this, but I don't want to vote for it.
I need six.
And there are seven of us here tonight.
Gentlemen, your vote please. And it is approved 7-0.
Thank you.
Resolution number 6257 has been passed and adopted. And I too thank you, gentlemen. Next is a resolution, resolution number 6258, executing the loan extension agreement and promissory note between the city of Beatrice and Candham's Inc., Michael S. Schaefer and Shelley R. Schaefer for the extension of a direct loan in the amount of $299,000 under the city of Beatrice Community Development Block Grant Reuse Fund.
Mayor, Mayor, I would move that resolution number 6258 be passed and adopted.
Second? Moved by Catlin, second by Claybaugh, that resolution number 6258 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
This is a loan extension, and 2012, the city authorized loaning Candham's $299,000. He ended up borrowing about $273,000 at that time. Throughout the last six years, he's been making payments, there's approximately about $100,000 balance that's currently outstanding. And so what you have before you is an extension of that repayment of that last $100,000 that's remaining. The agreement is a two-year extension. It calls for a $20,000 payment to be made October 1st of this year, a $20,000 payment to be, to be made October 1st of next year, with additional payments be made every two weeks of $500 throughout the course of those two years, and then finally a balloon payment on October 1st of 2020 for the final payment of the outstanding balance.
$500 a week?
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
Rick?
I don't remember how that all went, that, that there was money coming from the Film Institute or something like that that didn't materialize, what, whatever. I think there was, there was funds that came in for a period of time, but then there was a clause in the contract by the admission of the individual that says that he overlooked it and that, I think it stopped, I think it sunset. Because that was originally to pay, a large part of it, wasn't it? Like 60% of it or something, as I remember, or some, something like that? Do you remember?
Initially, when the loan was established, it was thought that those virtual print fees, I believe that's what they were called, were to be made by the studios back to these individual movie theaters. There would be enough of those coming in to make the, the payments on the loan as we went forward. There was a short period of time when that did occur, but it's not occurred during the last couple of years.
Any other comments? Questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the public? And your vote please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution number 6258 has been passed and adopted. Next item is a public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anything for the public forum from the council first? And the audience? All right, go to item seven, city administrators' monthly report. Tobias?
Once again, just a couple of highlights for you. If you have not been out to Hannibal Park, if you've been out there, you'll notice that the trail inside the park has been completed, the shelter has been done, most of the playground structure, well, playground structure is up, most of the concrete around it has been done, then we have to bring in the rubber matting and have that completed. If you're wondering why the trail through the syst, through the park kind of stops in the middle of nowhere, it's because the plan is, is when the Hannibal Park to Water Park Trail comes through, it'll connect right there and continue and take you the rest of the way, but it does kind of look like it's a trail to nowhere at this point, but that's the plan. The indoor facility that's going in out there, our, what we've been told is the steel should be delivered September 6th, and so that'll start being built here shortly. And then finally, Standing Bear Trail Phase Two. As you guys know, we went out for bids, Lotman received that project, he's already started to submit shop drawings, his hope is to be in there yet this August, very early part of September, and start working on that project. And so that one, you should see moved fairly quickly.
How long will it take him?
He should be done before this, I mean, before the snow flies, assuming you get a, not a really bad winter, fall here, and just get a chance to continue to work for a little bit longer. I think by, you know, mid-November, hopefully it's done, and you can start biking on it.
Toby, when that trail comes up from Water Park, has there been any discussion about maybe hooking it into the Bluebird Trail out there at the BSDC? That's a nice little, that's a nice little trail that's existing out there.
No, there has not been a run on the west side of BSDC's property for a little while, but it has not been talked about hooking into their trail. We certainly can talk to them, can't say we, we just never has come up to have that conversation.
Worth to look at, because that's a nice little trail that goes down through there.
Okay.
So, might be worth looking at.
Yeah, we can talk to them and see.
We can move, you know, somewhere in there and incorporate that trail, that might be nice.
We start now, we might have the state's approval by the time I see.
By the time my casket's ready, huh?
Any questions of Tobias? All right, thank you, Tobias. Our next city council meeting is going to be on September 4th in these chambers, and we'll have a work session next Monday night, August 27th, at 7 o'clock. Mr. Catlin, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I would move that the meeting be adjourned at 8:05 PM.
Second? By Catlin, second by Bilzbuck, the meeting be adjourned at 8:05 PM. Your vote please, and that is approved 7-0.
And those kids will never have to do government again.